Good evening and welcome to the North Idaho Board of Trustees' August 21st meeting. Would you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great Godlike performance of Sanes, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and trustee Banducci, would you, trustee Banducci, would you read the mission statement?
Let me get my glasses.
All right.
You're supposed to let me know when you're gonna do this to me.
No, I like the surprise.
All right. All right, the North Idaho College Mission Statement is as, "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning."
Thank you. We have a full quorum tonight, and board, have we all had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if you have done so and there are no changes, we will accept them as written. Hearing no changes, we'll accept the minutes. Thank you, and Shannon, you have the public comment? Mr. Miller, that was fast, you're up already.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Doug Miller. I was born and raised in Coeur d'Alene and attended this college from 1969, 1971, graduated from here in 1971. My oldest son also attended this college and graduated and then moved on to University of Idaho and got his degree in architecture and his master's degree at the University of Idaho. I've been a longtime member of the NIC Booster Club as well as the Alumni Association. The question that I have for the board, I mean, obviously with the athletics being in the news front and center quite a bit, is what is the board's intentions, if any, to move the college back out of the NWhac into the NJCAA division?
Okay, so, Mr. Miller, we generally take public comment, we don't, we don't respond to public comments.
Oh, no, that's fine, I understand. I'm not, I'm not familiar with your protocol here, so...
But I don't, but I don't want you to go away feeling like you've accomplished nothing.
Okay, thank you.
So, I will just say in general, the board hasn't had any, certainly any discussions about whether to move conferences. In the future, that could come forward and be an agenda item, and there'd be plenty of public notice that we were gonna discuss that. So, but at this point in time, there's been no discussion to move out of our current, our current...
Okay. Would one of the items possibly be a petition or signatures from community members?
To change conferences?
To change conferences?
Well, we wouldn't ever tell the community what they could or could not do to approach us, but at this point in time, we're still trying to work through the entire situation with the NWhac. We have pledged to the NWhac that we're going to do our best to work within their rules, and so it's probably a little soon for us to give any strong consideration.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, so...
But we do appreciate your comments and being willing to come here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you.
NIC grad, thank you for that.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us on to celebrating success, and Dr. Burns, would you do the introduction?
Chair Wood, members of the board, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Fred Swanson, who is the Director of our Basic Patrol Academy here at North Idaho College. We're really proud of our Basic Patrol Academy. It was one of those programs that took a lot of work, a lot of energy, a lot of community involvement to actually be able to offer this program in North Idaho, and we're proud of the work that we've done over the years, and so Fred is here to share some of that success with you and also, in a way, give thanks to the board and the college for the support that we've received this program because this program requires a lot of maintenance and, and probably supplies that most programs don't require, and so he's here to share part of that with you.
Thank you. Welcome, Fred.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, thank you. Members of the board, Chair Wood, President McLennan, thank you for the opportunity for us to share the success of the North Idaho College Basic Patrol Academy Law Enforcement Program. Actually, the program actually has a long history with NIC, starting in 1973, as far back as I could find. Between 1973 to the spring of 2019, records indicate a total of 251 graduates from the law enforcement program. Because of the nature of the program as a selective entrance program in which the students must undergo a background investigation and polygraph examination, and for the past several years, the students also had to complete a psychological evaluation that may affect numbers of attendance. Many of those graduates gained employment in the local law enforcement agencies in North Idaho, including several who are now, or were before retirement, supervisors and administrators in their respective agencies. Additionally, many of those graduates moved on to greener pastures in the surrounding states. In 2009, with the implementation of the academy format currently in use as we're doing it today, the Idaho Peace Officers Standards and Training Council accredited NIC's program to teach post-material for peace officer certification in Idaho. North Idaho law enforcement agencies were very strong advocates of a law enforcement academy in North Idaho. These agencies committed resources and equipment for this to happen. This provided local law enforcement agencies the ability to send their new hires to the North Idaho College Academy, referred by many as Post-North, and North Idaho College was able to offer the Post Secondary Certificate in addition to the two-year Associate's of Applied Science degree it had currently offered. Having their new officers trained here in North Idaho by officers they would be working with, rather than sending them south to Boise and eventually Meridian for an extended period, has proven a huge benefit to the agencies, their employees, and the self-sponsored students. This greatly increased the number of graduates in the certificate program. Records show the first year of having the academy format, there were 32 certificate graduates and one AAS graduate. Since that time, we have had 206 graduates of the Post Secondary Certificate and 15 AAS degrees. The law enforcement program currently offers their Basic Technical Certificate, which encompasses 22 college credits which are attached to three college courses upon suc- sorry, excuse me, upon successful completion of the Basic Patrol Academy. At the academy, we teach over 46 topics referenced to these three college courses. A student may earn an intermediate technical certificate with completion of the academy and an additional semester of four general academic courses, and the AAS includes the academy credits with an additional three semesters of general education instruction. All students are encouraged to continue their education to obtain the AAS, but many choose to initially graduate the academy to begin their careers in hopes to return later for the degree. Self-sponsored students are those individuals who, for a variety of reasons, may not be initially hired by an agency, or who select to gain the training before applying for a full-time job. They pay their own way through the academy, which includes the tests and exams during the selection process, their own uniforms, which currently costs approximately $1,000 for them to get started, and then they pay the tuition and student fees as well. It is a true commitment to attend the academy after having paid those costs and sitting next to students in the same class whose agencies paid their costs and who are being paid to attend. Since 2009, the largest class was 21 and the smallest class was eight students. This program has realized a huge commitment from North Idaho College and the local law enforcement community. Initially, in addition to the large purchases by NIC, some equipment to include patrol cars used by the academy were donated by local agencies. Agencies followed their employees to more consist- or, I'm sorry, agencies allowed their employees to more consistently instruct at the academy, sharing their knowledge and experience to the newly hired agency students, their future fellow employees, as well as to the self-sponsored students. North Idaho College employs 1.7 full-time positions working at the academy. We provide over 600 hours of post-mandated training, instruction in one semester. We rely heavily upon the more than 50 adjunct instructors and volunteers from the various law enforcement agencies in North Idaho. Our instructors and volunteers come from agencies such as Idaho State Police, Cootney County Sheriff's Office, Cootney County Prosecutor's Office, Boundary County Sheriff's Office, Bonner County Sheriff's Office, Coeur d'Alene Police Department, the Post Falls Police Department, the Rathron Police Department, the Priest River Police Department, the Latah County Prosecutor's Office, and Idaho Fish and Game. Many of the agencies allow their employees to teach at the academy on department time at no cost to NIC, and while some of them, North Idaho College must pay as adjunct instructors. The academy is very personnel-intensive, as you may realize. Equipment is also a large, huge commitment from North Idaho College and the agencies. For example, in 2009, 2010, my predecessor obtained a grant to purchase a firearm simulation system. The system, at a cost of approximately $100,000, has been used to teach basic fundamentals of marksmanship, develop and build decision-making skills, force escalation/deescalation, use of force and shoot/don't shoot, and weapon handling techniques. Unfortunately, this equipment became outdated and has not been usable for the past few years. North Idaho College recently obtained state funding approval to replace this system at a cost of approximately $45,000. Seems the prices have gone down. In the past three years, we've also replaced three patrol cars used for skills training, traffic stop scenarios, and emergency vehicle operations, and late last fall, NIC obtained funding to replace the Skid Car System, which was dated back to the early 2000s. That was a significant cost as well, $62,000 for the system, $20,000 for the vehicle. The Skid Car System is a driver training program that represents a proven concept we refer to as the science of controlled driving. Based on a foundation of mind over motor, this approach builds and strengthens a driver's understanding of vehicle dynamics, hones his or her sensory skills, and teaches sound driving strategies while refining a driver's reactionary motor skill. That's from the Skid Car System website, that's kind of explains it. This is a valuable knowledge and skills for officers who spend a majority of their day driving emergency response vehicles. Three years ago, the North Idaho College Foundation provided funding for the purchase of 12 laptop computers for student use at the academy. With the implementation of electronic training resources and material for the students, this has helped modernize the training platform and provides readily available avenues for online resources for the students. We've also updated the firearms used in the academy, moving from a variety of calibers of weapons to the weapons platform currently used by the majority of the agencies we serve. All of these equipment improvements have been for the benefit of the student. Equipment is very costly, but important to maintain currency and to enhance the training. The local law enforcement agencies recognize this, and through their strong commitment to this program, have helped with that improvement. Last year, the Coeur d'Alene Police Department obtained approval to donate portable police radios to the academy, which are very beneficial when working in the scenarios, traffic stops types incidents. Unfortunately, we're not able to use those radios because of frequency issues. Post Falls Police Department had radios that were, that had frequencies that we could use, so they're in the process, the final stages of donating those radios to the academy for our use. And lastly, with the size of the current academy, the Coeur d'Alene Police Department and the Cootney County Sheriff's Office have assigned, each agency has assigned a recruit training officer to the academy at absolutely no cost to the North Idaho College. Both are experienced officers, agency recruiters, and field training officers for their respective agencies, who bring a wealth of knowledge and experience to the program. The RTOs will help supervise the students, recruits, and provide guidance to help understand and assimilate into the police culture, mindset, and discipline necessary for the successful career in law enforcement. The implementation of this program already has other agencies considering doing the same in the future. This commitment from the agencies greatly underscores the strong collaboration and partnerships NIC has maintained with the North Idaho College, I'm sorry, the North Idaho law enforcement community, and demonstrates the wish of success for all students. I'd ask Detective Taylor, she is from Coeur d'Alene Police Department, assigned as the RTO at the academy. She was late with the class, she was gonna be here. She told, said I could tell her story as a self-sponsored student. She explained that she had tested for agencies, wasn't able to get hired for a variety of reasons, and decided to put herself through as a self-sponsor. She paid her own way, immediately after graduation, got hired with the Cootney County Sheriff's Office, worked there a short time, and then went to the Coeur d'Alene Police Department. She's now a field training officer, RTO, great officer, so that's just one success story of her, that she couldn't be here. That was quick. Any questions?
Yes, thank you, Fred, good information. Trustee Dunlap.
Fred, thank you very much for that explanation about the academy, but could you tell us a little bit about yourself and your background?
Yeah, I don't have to read that. I worked for, I started with the Latah County Sheriff's Office in Moscow, worked there for a few years, worked for Moscow Police Department for a few years, and then got hired with what is now the Idaho State Police, retired from there after 26 years as a detective, retired to take the job at North Idaho College.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Banducci.
Fred, just out of curiosity, approximately how many of the students are paying their own way? If you had to guess, or maybe you know?
I didn't put that statistic together. Right now, in our, we have a class of 15, we have five self-sponsors out of the others or agency-sponsored.
Is that typical, a third?
Yeah, that's about typical, yeah. We've, we've had classes with one self-sponsors, last class, we had four, before that, we had six, so it varies, yeah.
You shared the story with us, is that typical that the self-sponsored folks get hired pretty readily?
It's about, I did, kinda did some numbers, it's about 80% success rate of getting hired. Again, that is dependent on the applicant.
Sure.
Some have moved out of the area, decided not to do it. We've had some failures in the academy as well that obviously couldn't go on.
Sure, it's not for everybody, but I was just curious, so there's a fairly high success rate for those that choose to take that path, though?
Yes, yes, we've had students hired during the academy by agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Howard.
Fred, I wanted to thank you for that outline of the training that these law enforcement personnel, prospective law enforcement personnel get and personnel in practice at the time, or employed at the time. You know, so often the public hears about law enforcement, and it's good for your presentation, which is gonna be televised, that the public will understand the nature of the training that they get and how involved it is and how in-depth it is, so I want to thank you for that, not just for our own edification, but for the edification of the public that listens to these presentations, and believe me, people actually watch these meetings, it surprises me sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did have a question, over the period of time that we've had this program, there have been issues with regard to north, north and south Idaho and where we have the training and how we concentrate. Do you have any suggestions that, that we should listen to about ways to improve the program as it presently sits?
A large part of its funding, all the funding goes straight, goes to the south in the Meridian, state-funded, general-funded, funded through citations, so that, that takes a lot of avenues for us to be able to present the exact same program they have. I know you just, you talked about previous issues with Post and the bantering of starting an academy up here, and that was the, that administration at that time of Post. Currently, the Post administration is very open, more willing to discuss issues with this, they're, they, they share the information with us freely. I called down and I said, can I have this, and they give it, I mean, that day, I have it. So, I think it was an atmosphere of that administration that's no longer there.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, so I think it's improved greatly, and even talking to the chiefs and sheriffs, everybody's been impressed with that.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fred, to follow up on that, the best model in my mind for the entire state would be to decentralize and have Post academies all over the state, funded by the state. We're not there yet, so the work that you're doing at NIC is just so important, and I'm so happy to hear how closely you're working with our local agencies. Couple of follow-up questions. The, the highest level that a patrolman could possibly get would be the intermediate certificate, and you've offered that through the college, that's the Post Intermediate, correct?
That, well, it's a Post, I mean, sorry, it's an intermediate technical certificate from North Idaho College.
So, it has nothing to do with the Post Academy?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Post issues their own certificates of being certified to be a police officer, the basic, intermediate, advanced, masters, supervisory, yeah.
My thought, my question about that is, I wonder if that's a possibility, you know, it doesn't take much to get those extra steps for officers, I don't know if that's something down the road we could look at because that actually impacts their wallet.
Yeah.
I can't speak for all agencies, but for Coeur d'Alene Police Department, they are paid additional wages if they get those advanced certificates, and that level of training benefits all of us.
Yes.
So, throwing that out there. The other, the, congratulations on the Skid Car.
Thank you.
As we well know, one of the highest-risked officers is driving, and once they would leave the academy in Boise years ago, that was the end of the training for driving, and all of you were on the road with us, so, anyway, that is really good news. Along those lines, another seed to set is our own EVOC course, and I would look for partnerships with the agencies. NIC seems to have a lot of land out there on the prairie, but that EVOC course would keep law enforcement safe because they'd be able to practice all the time, that emergency kind of driving, so...
And that, and if I can mirror that, I've talked to the, we, we use our driving courses up at the airport, a portion of the airport runway. Talking to the deputy director up there, he, he estimates a year, up to three years, and we won't be able to use it anymore just because of the traffic that they're getting up there.
Yeah.
So, we're, I've been talking with him, we're starting to branch out and trying to find that unilateral, multi-agency cooperation to make that happen.
We really need that, it's really critical for the safety of law enforcement and the public. Um, let's see, I thought I had one more thing. The RTOs, how many hours are they putting in?
They're assigned to the academy full-time, 40 hours a week.
And the agencies are picking up that cost?
Yes.
That's an incredible commitment.
Yes, it very, very much is.
So, that's wonderful. Okay, well, Fred, wonderful presentation, and thank you, we're very excited about this. Can't believe it's been 10 years.
Yeah.
I don't know where the years go, but, okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
That takes us on to our constituent reports, and we have a, we have a new group. So, for ASNIC, Paul McLeod, welcome.
Members of the board, Chair Wood, President McLennan, it's so good to be here, it's good to see you all again. Had a wonderful summer, over the summer, ASNIC worked with, with the rest of the staff to put together orientations for the students, and those went really well. We had a lot of help from ASNIC officers, putting time over the summer to, to help lead groups, and that was just, it was, it was wonderful. We went through our training week, the week before school started, and that was just incredible. We kicked it off by going to the staff convocation, and it was really, really cool, being, being there, getting to see the same things that the staff do, getting to experience that, it really was wonderful, it was really inspiring as well, the, the whole thing was put together very well, and we also had the opportunity to use the ropes course behind the sub in some leadership training, it was fantastic. We partnered with the RAs and the rec staff to get some team building in, that was wonderful as well. We also had the opportunity to do the green dot training, and just knowing what to do in really difficult circumstances is really beneficial, so I'm really glad we had that opportunity as well. All right, so we are trying to fill three senate positions right now, we're really excited, we've gotten a lot of interest so far, so we're hoping to get those filled right away in the first couple of weeks of school. A lot of senators have already picked up projects, we're really excited about that. Often, it takes a little while for senators to, to get into the role of things, but this group that we have, even though it's just a few of them, we're still missing a few members, they all are incredibly passionate, they're, they're really excited, and they're, I'm excited too, they're really passionate about making, making a real difference at this school, and we'd just love to see that. I began working with Peg Blake to put together some kind of feedback for the Cardinal Central, since just recently, a lot of students just went through, well, had a lot of experiences with the Cardinal Central, whether financial aid, registration, all those things. We just want to get a feel of student experience there, so we decided on doing a survey, we'll be sending that out, hopefully as soon as possible while their experiences are still fresh in their minds. Pretty short report today, that's all I have for you, thank you so much for having me.
That's great, Paul. Questions, board, for our new ASNIC president? Welcome aboard, it'd be fun to work with you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Not a question, but one quick statement.
Oh.
Hey, when you do fill those three spots, hopefully that'll go well, would love to have a list of who everybody is at that point, just so we can have reference for that.
Oh, absolutely. I invited them to come, unfortunately, a lot of the senators couldn't make it because we have an event going on right now, it's the tie-dye splash party over at the beach, may have saw some students walking over there.
That's much more fun, we're all going.
I mean, fine with me, all right.
President McLennan had a comment.
You know, I'm gonna ask you this question, but is there anything unique about one of our senators this year in terms of the constituent group that she might represent?
Oh, yes, thank you so much for mentioning that, President McLennan. We have recently brought on a dual-enroll position, so in the past, the dual-enrolls, a third of our population is dual-enrolled, and we haven't had any real representation for those students, so this year, we really wanted to give them some representation, so we adopted this new position, and so far, it's been great. Abby, Abby Rhoades, Rhodey, is the one who's taken up the position.
I know, we all understand that reference.
She has been incredible, we really want to make this a permanent position in the senate and represent the dual enrollment soon, it's much more in the future.
What high school is she with, Paul?
Great question, I believe it's Coeur d'Alene High School.
Great, great. Anything further, board? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Staff Assembly, Tom Green, welcome, Tom.
Good evening, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, thanks for having me, I appreciate it. I'm gonna give the, talk about, we had our first staff assembly meeting last Thursday, and Grayden Stanley and Chris Martin were both guests for, there to give presentations which were greatly appreciated. First, Chris Martin gave us a presentation on, he gave us some updates on some projects around town, I mean, around campus, some of the campus buildings such as Boswell Hall, which is, right now, doesn't have any seats in the auditorium, and it, those are in the process of getting moved in there, it's getting a really nice update, and it's gonna be a facelift, is how he put it, and it should be really nice. The other big project that was, was really a surprise for me and some of the others was the Meyer Health and Science Building, which we saw an artist rendering, and it was impressive, it was really fantastic, and there's a lot of buzz about how, how impressive that project is. It's, it's exciting. Chris Martin also gave us a quick update on the, a few policies, policy 3.09 that's coming through, and just kinda gave us updates where they are and, and some of the ones that are gonna be, be on our, on the horizon for this upcoming semester and next semester. Then Grayden Stanley, who was, brought with him Curtis Raditz and Steve McGordy, Curtis is from Sedexo, he had a few questions that had come up over the summer about some first rider refusal and some of the other just nuances and new procedures on campus that when it comes to Sedexo, who's of course running dining services, and that was great, it was great to have that open communication with Curtis there, and there were a lot of questions from, he took from the audience, and real good, good back and forth, and I think we, it went, it went well.
Good.
Like Paul, it was a pretty short meeting, so I, it's gonna be a short report tonight. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Tom. Board questions for Tom?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Chris.
So, you were elected, did you, did somebody, did you leave town and somebody said, you're it, or did you say, I want to do this?
Well, I was nominated, I started... I still don't know who nominated me. I'm still looking for them, actually.
Well, good. It'll be fun working with you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your report.
We'll be working together for a long time, actually.
Yes, we have.
Thank you, Chair Wood.
Thanks, Tom. Faculty Assembly, Chris Pichat? Is that how?
Pellchat.
Pellchat, thank you.
Chair Wood, fellow board members, President McLennan, thank you for having me. I'm here to present the faculty assembly report. And we had our first meeting last week. It was rather short, just kinda procedural, getting everybody up to speed with how things roll. We started off having to do some basic stuff. I didn't have a full executive committee, so it was just me and the VP. We needed to fill the treasurer and secretary roles. So we started there. We had a couple people that came out during, came up during the summer with that expressed interest. So we got them nominated in, so now we have a full executive committee. And once that was set, then we rolled into the actual meeting. The folks that came onboard, Josan Lean from English and Cheryl Cunningham from Mathematics. And they both chose appropriate roles. English is the secretary and Mathematics is the treasurer. I like that.
That's perfect.
Yep. I reminded folks about parliamentary procedure. We had a lot of new folks in the room, and some of them hadn't really understood what faculty assembly was. And so we talked a little bit about that and how the group was gonna make decisions and how to get things on the floor if they wanted them talked about. So we went through that. I reminded them of what the touchpoints were with the leadership for the Assembly Chair and kinda went through the structure of all the meetings that I go to and people I talk to. And so they were clear when they were talking to me as an assembly where their voice would then travel around campus and when that would happen. So that was nice for them. We also talked about the importance of attending the faculty assembly. So last year, I was a new faculty. This is my second year. I noticed that there was a lack of attendance at some of the faculty assemblies. And there were some things that faculty would talk about and want their, one of their opinions heard. And so we said that in order for us to have a collective voice as faculty, attendance has to be up. And I can't just bring a single faculty member's voice to a place like this and consider it to be the voice of the land. We need everybody there to just kinda say that that's the collective voice. And so we talked a little bit about the importance of that. We also spoke about the upcoming accreditation process that the college is gonna be going through and the impact that that's gonna have on faculty. There's gonna be a lot of policies and procedures that are gonna be put forward most likely this fall in line with that visit that's coming up in the spring. And our group looks over that stuff occasionally. And so we're gonna probably have some of that to look at. We were also visited by Tricia Southard. She came and spoke a little bit about the Sterling Silver Awards and the importance of nominating faculty for those awards. Last year, only two faculty were nominated. And we don't necessarily know why that was, but she wanted to come and make sure that we do a better job showcasing the faculty that do really excellent work here on campus. And then we ended the meeting. We have a lot of things that we need to do procedurally to make sure that the faculty's responsibility for the participatory governance of North Idaho College is in place. And so we're getting everybody in line to make sure that they're serving on appropriate committees and that we all know who's serving where and making sure that everybody's doing their due diligence to do their share of the work. That's all I have for you. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Chris. Joe?
Chris, what, first of all, thank you for stepping up to lead the faculty assembly.
Sure.
And since you put me in here such a short period of time. So what do you teach and where are you coming to us from?
Sure. So I teach in the Cardinal Learning Commons. There were some courses that were started last year as kind of an experiment to figure out how to better shape a first-year experience here for students. So I teach primarily in that area. I teach a course called Designing Your NIC Experience and then a course called Designing Your Life. I come here from Stanford University. I taught down there for six years, ran several programs down in that area. I am from here, though. I graduated from Eastern Washington University and University of Idaho, so this is coming home for me. So I'm pretty excited about the opportunity to come up here. I ended up in this faculty assembly role. I didn't necessarily step up. It was a meeting where...
Well, I just imagine that that happened.
Yeah. Somebody nominated me, and I said yes, and I figured it would, I would be a name on a list of several other people and folks would, somebody else would be chosen, and that was that. And actually, we voted for me to become the chair, and I didn't realize that that vote went through until the next week, so.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah, no problem. That's great.
Any other questions for Chris?
Welcome home.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been quite a while. I went from here to New York to California and back, so.
It was interesting how quickly you claimed North Idaho when you said you were from teaching in Stanford.
Yeah, yeah. I was only, I was a tourist there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chris. And that takes us to the senate. Ben, would you pronounce your last name so I don't do the same thing to you?
Yeah, no problem. It's Teshida.
Teshida.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so Chair Wood, members of the board. We had our first senate meeting just last Thursday. It was a meeting where we started off with brief introductions and introductions of the process of the senate, what happens with policies in the college as a whole, bringing the new senators up to speed. We also did a brief review of Robert's Rules of Order and talked about how we use those. We then had, Chris Martin came to talk about the DeArmond Building naming that you'll see later today. We did pass that advisory vote through the senate this time. Following that, we then brought up our next agenda item, which was the copyright policy. That is one that was passed through the senate last spring. We forwarded that on to the president. There were comments that came back, and so we've retaken that one up to consider that. There was a lot of discussion around the comments and trying to figure out how we work and operate. And so we spent the rest of our meeting working through that policy and tabled it, and we'll actually bring that up at our next meeting. The other thing we did is I talked about our schedule, given that this is an accreditation year. I went ahead and stacked up our meetings. I doubled up most months. So I said, "Thank you for being here, everybody at the senate." And hopefully, that will be enough meetings to get us through. So that was our meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Ben?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
And thank you to all of our new constituent reporters. We appreciate this. You'll spend the next year working with the board and giving us some great feedback, and we appreciate it. Thanks. That takes us on to the president's report. Dr. McLennan?
Thank you, Chair Wood. You know, I was gonna start with the convocation, but I think I'm gonna end with that. So I'll start first with, we had a visit on Monday from Steve Ackerman. Steve Ackerman is the lead policy advisor for Representative Fulter. And it was his first trip to North Idaho in that capacity. He's based in DC. That's where he's doing his work supporting Representative Fulter. But he wanted to learn about North Idaho College. And we spent several hours with him, took him through the Parker Technical Education Center and met with him to discuss some of the key strategic issues facing North Idaho College in particular, where our interest would be with federal support through programs through the Department of Education, through the Economic Development Administration. And he came to, I think, a pretty good understanding of some of the important work that we're doing with those federal resources. We talked to him also about concerns related to accountability for, especially in career and technical programs and short-term certificate programs, and the easing of those accountability requirements by the Department of Education, in particular with respect to the impact that will have in the proprietary world and the for-profit colleges having those accountability requirements removed. And we just wanted to caution him, help him. We didn't caution him. We asked him in a cautionary way to keep track of the impact of the removal of those accountability features because it will have a pretty, it has a very dramatic impact, has had a dramatic impact on a pretty large scale. We've read many national stories of some of the institutions that have gone underwater and left students without neither their certificate, but with, also with heavy debt. So we talked about that. We also took him on a tour through the Headland Building and the Venture Center and the work that we're doing around entrepreneurship. And so I think we did a good three-or-so-hour primer of what's important at North Idaho College from our perspective of federal involvement. We, I also want to acknowledge the media activity that's been in the press related to the findings that were delivered to us from our athletic, one of our athletic conferences. And the tactic of releasing all the relevant documents to the public for their review has been received favorably. We, people are accessing those documents, and I do think it's able to help them answer many of the questions they might have. I'm very confident in the direction that we have been on and that we continue to be on with respect to correcting actions that were cited in the findings from the NWAAC. And in particular, I want to just acknowledge and thank Dr. Grayden Stanley for the work that he's been doing. As you can imagine, this has been a very heavy lift to get into the time and the level of detail that it's taken to step into the role that he has. And he's just done a terrific job. And so I just want to share that appreciation publicly. Lastly, I want to go to convocation this year. You heard Paul talk about that. It was our theme of accreditation this year was our introduction or reintroduction to the college community of the, this is the year of our full-scale evaluation visit by the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities for our accreditation and to thematically and engage the institution in the work that we're gonna be communicating quite a lot about. The intent with this convocation was to share our story and share the why of why we're here at North Idaho College. And so we had an exercise where faculty and staff talked about their why. Some shared their why. In fact, after the convocation, I had several people come up to me and personally share their why with me. But both Paul and Chair Wood shared their why publicly at the microphone to the auditorium. And I think everybody, either through drama or humor, was moved by those stories and appreciated key people in leadership positions being able to share personal stories about their experience with North Idaho College. And so we genuinely appreciated that. I also promised not to give a long speech, but to let some of our students share their why. And so I thought for your enjoyment tonight, we'd share a little portion of the video that was shared at convocation.
It really is a place where you can find yourself and figure out who you are.
Yael Anderson, who found me after I spoke at a Scholarship Foundation event and encouraged me to actively look into a scholarship for single mothers.
The fact that I was homeless before coming to this college, which is relevant because not only do I get a great education here with professors who've written books and who are huge members of the community that are well-respected, but I also met my roommate here because of the resources and the clubs that NIC offers.
But I loved it. I loved the grittiness. I loved all the squeezing and the challenging it did in my mind. And it was a workout. Two years of a serious mind workout. And I feel stronger because of it. I feel more empowered. I live out of a place of empowerment.
NIC changed my life. When I started going there, I just realized how much the people that work there and other students were so hopeful and helpful and just into seeing you succeed. The best thing about NIC is the support.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who works their butts off to try to make people better. You are the reason that businesses exist. You're the reason why the economy goes. You are, you are sending people out and you're fine-tuning them.
The transition into their education was absolutely seamless and made it easy for someone like me who hadn't been to school in quite a while to integrate myself and be successful. Again, I can't thank NIC enough for how much they've helped me out and how they've helped me navigate even going to LCSC. The campus is absolutely gorgeous, so nothing like taking a class and then going for a swim in the summer right afterwards.
And I just don't think that you can put a price on the experiences you find in college. All the knowledge I learned, I mean, there's nothing like it. Waking up bright and early in the morning to walk onto that beautiful campus to learn something new every day.
When I was serving at Olive Garden, I was back into the table at the end, and they said, "We really like your customer service abilities. How would you like a job"? And ever since then, I've been a part of one of the, I mean, I would say the best job I've ever had, honestly. And I can attribute that directly to things that I learned at the college. And so, you know, having said that, taking that course and really, you know, kinda feeding off the enthusiasm from the other students and from my instructor really helped me kind of come around and realize who I am as a person, that I love talking to people, that I love being around them, and that I think I would love to do that as some sort of career choice.
A lot of the learning really did happen outside of the classroom. It happened with those connections that I was making with other students and the connections I was making with other staff. And just all of those relationships really led me to believe that I was meant to be there and I wasn't an imposter. And it was, I was doing what I was meant to be doing. I truly found my passion and my calling in life through my time at North Idaho College.
I was a housewife for seventeen years. I went through a divorce. I realized pretty quickly that I didn't want to do retail or fast food or waitress for the rest of my life. And I was encouraged by my son, Josh, to go back to school. I was a little hesitant, and he connected me with a lady that had went through the social work program, and she inspired me.
And someone who has really influenced me at NIC has definitely been Josh Meisner. I not only had eight classes, eight classes with the dude, but he also took time to talk with me whenever I needed a support system, whether it was for school health or personal problems, you name it. He was there for you.
Those are all unscripted, and they were all selfies. And one of the things that really impressed me when I saw it for the first time was just the sheer diversity of our students and our students' experiences. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McLennan. Are there questions for the president? Well, I just want to comment that I really enjoyed the convocation. It was just, it was just fun, really fun. And it seemed like there was a lot of participation. I think that's what made the difference. We weren't standing on the stage talking to people. Everyone was involved. So I'd like to commend your whole staff for working so hard on that. It was wonderful. Thank you. Okay, I lost my, there we go. This takes us on to Meyer Health and Science Building Expansion Update. Trustee Dunlap?
Thank you, Trustee Wood, or Chair Wood. The ALS-C architects who have been hired by the college to design the expansion of Meyer Health Science Facility have completed their initial schematic designs. And so, a week from Friday, which would be August 30th, Trustee Murray, myself, President McLennan and other members of the College Committee will be meeting with ALS-C here on campus to review those schematics and hopefully, we can bring that maybe to the next meeting to show the full Board and members of the community what that expansion will look like.
Great. That is good news. Any questions for Trustee Dunlap? Okay, thank you. You know what, Trustee Banducci, we don't have-
K-Tech.
We don't have K-Tech on the agenda.
I was going to do it under a remarks for the good.
That would work.
I'll do it whenever you'd like.
That was just an oversight on my part, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I did review the agenda. I apologize for that.
Well, I'll be at the end, I'll keep it short.
Okay. We have no old business, so our new business, Tab One Action Item, approved naming of the Bob and Leona DeArmond Building. Dr. McLennan?
Thank you, Trustee Wood. Background on this, at the December-
Do you want to talk? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to make a motion and get through that quickly.
Well, I, I think, I think it's good for the public to hear the background, but if you make a motion, I might, might respond.
I'll, I'll read this. At the December 17th, 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting, the Board approved naming the North Idaho Collaborative Education Facility, the Bob and Leona DeArmond Building, with the later understanding that a descriptive functional title would be developed and submitted at a later time. The recommended full name of the facility submitted for Board approval at this time is the Bob and Leona DeArmond College and University Center. And so, the requested action is to approve the Bob and Leona DeArmond College and University Center as the facility name for the building previously named the Bob and Leona DeArmond Building.
Trustee Howard, if you can repeat that acronym, I'll let you make a motion.
What acronym?
I don't know. Did you have a motion?
Yes, I would move that-
Does that shorten too?
I would move that we approve the renaming of the facility to the Bob and Leona DeArmond College and University Center.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dunlap. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that and well-deserved naming for the DeArmonds. Takes us to the Board Chair Report and I am going to follow the lead of the President. He got to show a pool video. We have another video that I'll do for my report. Thank you, Laura. Yes?
I had this one professor, E. Miller, who teaches math, she cared so much, she would meet with me for two hours every day before class and as painful and frustrating as it had to have been for her because, oh my God, I did not get it. She never once showed it. She was such a saint and she was always so positive and sassy and it just kept me going. Dude, because of you, I got to graduate. Like literally, thank you for saving my life.
There's so many moments and so many lessons that I learned that I'm always incredibly thankful for and when I think of North Idaho College, I can't help but think of my entire college experience.
I just really love all the faculty at North Idaho College and everyone you meet there makes you feel like family and from now on, you will be family. I'm just really glad that I chose to attend North Idaho College.
Thank you, Laura. That concludes my report. I would go to the remarks for the good of the order. Trustee Banducci?
Yes, we had a K-Tech meeting on the 14th, earlier than our, before our reception, actually, as it turned out. We re-elected Jerry Keane from the Post Falls School District Superintendent as our Chair and Ron Nielsen is our Vice Chair going forward. And it's been an interesting process over the last number of months with the funding and what's been going on at the state level and so as of the 14th, we have, now appears we are going to go ahead and get the HVAC program started. So, if anybody out there is interested in HVAC, give K-Tech a call. There's a few seats left there, I believe. That's in a cooperative relationship with us. We'll be sharing an instructor and he'll be coming over to our side of the street. Pretty exciting. And there was a significant waiting list, so they're going to do another, I don't know what the actual technical term for the class leader can help me, but they're CNAs essentially and so that's pretty exciting too at K-Tech. So, if you have an interest in that, if you're hearing this or seeing it, or you have a kid or grandkid, encourage them, but we're going to, I think we can accommodate another 12 with that. I think that's pretty close to what the waiting list was, so if you're interested, do it fast. So, enrollment was well over 400 and we just grew it a little bit more, so. If you want to instruct, please call us. We're working on that. Anyway, it's all good news from K-Tech. They're doing great.
Very good. Any questions for Trustee Banducci? All right, thank you. Any remarks for the good of the order? Hearing none, I will adjourn. Have a good evening.